Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Monticello City Council. We now call this meeting to order. Our invocation, let us bow heads. Heavenly Father, we've come to this place one more time, and we thank you for all your wonderful goodness. We pray your blessings that you will cover us tonight, lead us and guide us according to your will. Oh God, we pray, oh God, that you'll continue, oh God, to hold us up, help us in all of our endeavors. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of with liberty and justice. At this time, item number four is public comment. Do we have any?
Uh, Ms. King?
I'm here to speak on something on the agenda. How did you take it? I need you to sign in.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, item five, no, item six, oh goodness, resolution honoring Mrs. Dorothy Mae Simkins Barnhart. We ask the clerk to please read it for us.
All right, resolution in memory of Dorothy Mae Simkins Barnhart. Whereas Dorothy Mae Simkins Barnhart was a devoted member of the Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church and an outstanding employee of Palos Academy. And whereas Dorothy Barnhart was known for her internal love, guiding spirit, and unyielding devotion to her work, faith, and family. And whereas she consistently devoted herself to her work, ensuring each test was fulfilled with reliability and diligence, always ensuring her work was completed. And whereas her legacy of hard work, compassion, and faith has left an ineffable mark upon Jefferson County, the city of Monticello and all who have privilege of knowing her. And whereas the city of Monticello, its officials, employees, and citizens join together in honoring her memory and acknowledging the great contribution she has made to betterment for our community. Now therefore, it be resolved in the city of Monticello through its Mayor Honorable Gloria A. Cox hereby express heartfelt gratitude for the life and service of Dorothy Mae Simkins Barnhart, and extend sincere condolences to her family and loved ones. Be it further resolved that this resolution be upon the official records of the city of Monticello so that her memory will be forever cherished and never forgotten.
Thank you. And we may note also that Mrs. Barnhart is mother of one of our employees.
It's Gerard Barnhart. Grandson.
Okay, our grandson, okay. She had quite a few children, and we all mostly know about Barnhart Farms. Okay, let us move on. The city clerk job description.
I've prepared for each of you the, just a little bit altered, the job description that was put together when we hired the last city clerk. Now, this is, this contains ideal qualities and some of the requirements as far as living in the city and being a qualified elector. And then describes responsibilities, but as we know, somebody can be elected without necessarily having these qualities. So I wanted the council to look over this, and if there was anything that you would like me to change before we move through with looking for the new clerk. And I also put on there the salary of where we left off with the past clerk. So if any changes are wanted, just let me know.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think we at this point, the city clerk is the people's position, and it's more of the duties of the clerk. And I think what we have now from the city manager is a good starting point for you as the mayor. And if you want to take include the manager to advertise in the paper that the city clerk position is available, you interview the people, and you bring the recommendation to the board. The board will have it say because either you voted up or down. I think we kind of stray last time, and you can't have more than two council people asking questions without making a public meeting, and it kind of just went sideways. I think we should go back to the way it was. That's the duty of the mayor to make recommendations. The council will have their say, either they voted up or down. If they don't like the person, they vote against it, and we stop the process.
Okay.
That's, if it's in order to make a motion, I would like to make that motion. And we can get done with this and move on.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on that?
You want to make a motion?
I'll second.
All right.
Okay, so we're talking about going ahead and just for clarification, talking about advertising this?
Advertising that the city, the Monticello City Clerk position is open and it needs to be filled. The interview that the mayor and if her choice to include the city manager, they have a guideline to explain to the potential candidate of the person that this deduces that other requirements.
Okay, so we're not publishing this ahead of time? Or we are publishing this along with?
You can publish, I mean, if it's agreeable, we can publish it. But again, this clerk is the people's position. It's not a job description that the council.
I understand, but I just, I guess what I'm wondering is for people that might be interested, is it helpful for them to know what the job entails before they apply? That's all I'm asking is, is there a?
So you think that if they get that information before, you might get a wider pool? I mean, that's okay.
No, I actually, I'm wondering if we get a narrower pool, but that's, I'm just wondering if the, if this doesn't, you know, if we're not?
So I will mean my motion to include, to advertise those duties that was presented in that announcement.
I think we have three kind of separate lines going on here, just for everyone's clarity. We want to start the advertisement process, is that correct, Councilman M? We want to advertise the job duties. And on top of that, we want to designate Mayor Cox as the, to work with our city manager on interviewing potential candidates and making a recommendation. Is that all correct?
Okay.
In light of that, what I would recommend is because there was a change to the original motion, we have a motion and a second on that at this point in time.
Okay. I like the motion that we advertise the city clerk position with the job duties that was formulated. And also have the mayor, the mayor as the representation of the council along with the city manager, interview the candidate and make that, and make a recommendation to the council for a merger of the new city clerk.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, this is properly moved in second that we will advertise, no, properly moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so properly moved in second that we will advertise the position for city clerk, city clerk slash treasurer. And afterward, we would interview the candidates, mayor and city manager.
Before we do that?
Yeah, is this for, and then is Councilman Richardson?
Councilman Richardson having just walked in. Or were you, did you hear what the motion on the floor was?
I heard the last part of it.
Okay, the motion on the floor was to advertise the position of city clerk, include the description for the city clerk, and designate Mayor Cox to work with the city manager in interviewing potential candidates. Just because we have all the council here, we have four ayes so far, couldn't you issue a vote on that?
Yes.
Aye, okay.
You guys have it, we have unanimous.
Okay, all righty. Next item is the city dumpster.
So as you recall, I was looking for a good place to house the dumpster that used to be in the Dogwood City Parking Lot right by the post office. Now, I found a home for it. The Monticello News was happy to take that behind their property for a, we would, the idea was to start with a one-year contract of $1,200 for that year. But since then, some of the business owners had come to me. Now, again, this is intended for the businesses that are north of the courthouse on 19 and Dogwood so that they don't have to have the Big Pops garbage cans on the sidewalk. We provided this dumpster for them. Some of them had come to me and asked about keeping it over here, which right now, it's temporarily in the rear of City Hall. Once we started exploring that and talking to some businesses and see how they all feel, between the police, the police chief and myself, we are thinking that it would be a good fit right, and I've provided a picture for you. It would be right next to the parking of the police station so it would not be at City Hall. It would be right between us on Walnut. There is space there, we'd be able to cut out some of the, the granite there where there used to be, their trash cans sit anyways. That would keep it clean for one, because one of the largest issues we've had with this dumpster, we get complaints because people go, people that are not from the businesses go and throw stuff and fill it up, and then people don't even open it, and it's always garbage. Um, which I think would be a problem even if it was as close as the Monticello News. So this would fix that, this would assist both of us, and we would not need to have our trash cans either. And we have been going around and polling the businesses, and nobody has been against this idea. And so I'm asking what the council thinks about us permanently housing that city dumpster right there at the police station where we can keep positive ayes and control.
And what's the cost of that one?
That would be no cost to the city.
Okay.
Mayor, I have two questions. One is, is there enough room on the street there for a Pops truck to get in and dump that dumpster? Number one, and number two, this is little, but there's a propane tank right there. Is there a need to relocate that tank or put bollards up so that the?
We could put bollards, but there is room to, so there would be, once we cut out some of the dirt, there would be a retaining wall that would house that nicely, and we can put up the actual barrier around it that the code calls for. So we would, we checked, make sure there's room for that.
So how we, let me just say, how would you talk to the church? Does the church have a site?
We have not talked to them.
Okay.
I mean.
But I can, I can reach out to them.
Yeah.
They have a dumpster in that parking lot, but I hadn't thought to, to ask what they think about that.
Okay, so who does that little spot belong to?
It is.
It belongs to the city of Monticello.
Yeah, it is the, the police department's property. And it's, and it's all city of Monticello.
Well, I think it's courtesy, if you talk to the business, then you go.
Yes, sir.
Right next to the church, I think you at least.
Yeah, I, that was an oversight on my part. I will reach out to them and see how they feel about that. And so we could, I could bring this back to you, or we could get your opinion now, and then pending no issue with the church, we could move forward with that.
They shouldn't feel bad. They have one right there, and there's one Century Link right, so what's the issue? There's a garbage box right there, Pops guy, right across there. You do inside?
Right, yeah.
So put it there, put a barrier around it so, and if they have to get it locked because people gonna use it, I tell you.
Yeah, and I will ask them just because maybe they have future plans to move their dumpsters, maybe they're like, we've been trying to move it. And we do have one right across the street at Century Link.
Right, yes.
Two, right there.
Okay.
Which is more that you should talk to them, because now you're gonna create a lane for you.
Yes, sir, yes, I will.
Okay, all right, well, will you let us know in a minute?
Yes, okay, you got it.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to new business, item seven. Our requested true removal at southwest corner of Townhouse Coffee Company.
I'm gonna let the city planner and code enforcement, Quinn Atkinson, address some of these items.
So in speaking with the Cowans that now own the building itself, that's 100 East Washington Street, they have concerns about the Bradford pear tree that's right on the sidewalk. You'll see that I've got some photographs there for you to give you an idea. There's a tree out closer to the circle, but it's the tree right next to the building. That tree has actually caused damage to the sidewalk. The city's actually gone out and ground out some of the potential tripping hazards, but their now concern is that that tree and the root system could be damaging the foundation. I reached out to James McQuig from the Florida Forest Service. You should have a copy of his letter stating that he does believe that that tree could be causing some issues, and it does constitute maybe removing it. We also reached out to Alfonso of the Department of Transportation to make sure if that's an easement, which it is. They gave us a letter and approval to remove the tree if that's the will of the council to remove it. Again, no idea if it truly is damaging the foundation. We did briefly speak with Mr. James Kaufman, the building official, and he said most likely it is damaging the foundation to some, to some extent.
Do we have an estimate on removal?
We've not gotten that far. We've reached out to one person, and we have not gotten back, they've not gotten back with us, but again, I didn't wanna, you know, kind of blow the horn too quick until we knew if we were gonna remove it or not.
The last tree, I removed a tree on Felix Street that was much taller, and that was no more than $1,000.
This one may be a little bit more just because of the proximity to the building.
Yeah, it could be, but it shouldn't be too much greater. And this, this also would, this tree also narrows that pass right there when you pass in the corner of the building.
Right.
And so there would still be another tree, and then there'd be room for the bench that's there. And then they have, we've been talking with them about ideas for if we put another potted plant there or something.
That would be a good idea.
Okay.
So what's to ask, just to move forward with the?
To move forward with the removal of the tree, and then we'll start getting estimates to get the tree removed. But we wanted to find out what the council wanted to do. When you remove a tree, from my experience, especially one that's fairly prominent, they're gonna get some issues with it. People asking questions on why you remove your trees. Better to ask for permission first.
Okay.
All right. I want to, just for discussion's sake, suggest we, if the, will the council to move forward, but maybe with a maximum quote of not more than X, you know, to go ahead and proceed. You know, if it's over whatever dollar amount, then we come back to the council. But to allow you to go ahead, if that's what the vote is here.
So should that number be 1,500?
I'd say 2,000, just to be safe, but don't tell the three people that.
Just to be, just to be clear here, we can get competing quotes, which should reduce this somewhat. But if you're going to grant, you know, our city manager and city planner authority to do this, that, that's what I would recommend is get a few quotes.
Yes, yes.
Because that way we're knocking it, it doesn't matter what your upper limit is, it matters what everyone else's lower limit is.
That makes sense.
I guess, I was gonna say, he don't have to necessarily come back, because there's a threshold that he can use.
As long, I just didn't want to delay it unnecessarily for minor.
Okay, all right, and would you say we get about three quotes on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that? Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize city manager and planner to get three quotes for removal of Bradford pear, pear tree at Townhouse.
Okay.
I'm gonna comment, just for clarif, I'm sorry.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, this discussion? Okay, all right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that permission is given to get quotes on the tree with removal.
Mayor, any further comment?
This is to get quotes and proceed?
Yes.
Correct.
Oh, yes. Quotes and proceed.
That was just a point of clarification, as I understood it.
Thank you, yeah.
The three quotes, the city manager was the city manager, so he's free to take care of the situation without coming back now.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you for that question.
Okay. Our next item is water utilities, suggested conversion from cubic feet to gallons.
So this is something that came up with Corin Maine, who is our main provider of our water and sewer infrastructure. Now, they, we are one of the few that are using cubic feet for our units as opposed to gallons. And just to be clear, this is a discussion of, this is more clerical, this is not a change of cost or anything. This is as far as what's been provided here is a breakdown of some of the benefits. Some that they described to me was, one cubic foot is seven odd gallons of water. That's, for one, that's difficult for a lot of people to look at and understand what they're paying and what they're using. And then also, when, the way it was described to me, which at later date, I can bring someone from Corin Maine to give you a brief on it, he's just out of town. When you're looking for an issue, and you wanna know, all right, is, is my meter running, do I have a leak? It's gonna take longer for it to show you that seven gallons has pumped out, and then a digit changes, as opposed to one digit per gallon that's, that's changing. So this is a list of just some of the benefits. If we decided to move forward with this, there's options for the city to handle a lot of it under the guidance of Corin Maine, and they would assist, and the cost would be minimal other than our time and prioritizing. And then they can also put together an estimate of the cost to assist us with this. But this is something to think about in the near future, about just kind of catching up with this century. And just trying to make some things easier. So there's more to it, I don't know all those details, and so I wanted to start this conversation and just see what the council thought about this.
What would be the cost for the change? Do we have to change our meters?
So we wouldn't be changing meters, this is a reprogramming, and so they would assist us with that. But again, they said they, they didn't have an estimate yet of if we choose to let them help us do it all, they'll, they'll give me an estimate of that. But this is mostly just reprogramming, changing some of our stuff in the computer. It doesn't affect cost, it doesn't affect how we do anything. It is just for reporting and clerical type stuff. And then again, can help with identifying problems, because we do have some meters where the way they're measuring what's going through it, it might be several cubic feet before it changes any indicator, and that could be tens of gallons before you know that, that something's going on.
Makes sense.
So this is, this is more just, everyone does it this way, we're doing it this way.
Okay.
Do we know, does every meter in the city have to be touched for this change?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a note on this, because our current billing and pricing scheme is in cubic feet, we would likely need to adjust that as well.
But that's all in-house?
That's all in-house.
Yeah, so it'd be.
But it is something we will have to do at one of these meetings in order to kind of fix all of this and to correct.
Okay.
So just, this is more just something to think about. I'm not asking you for a decision right now.
Okay.
All righty, thank you. Next item is use of AI or related programs for transcribing meeting minutes.
This is something that we've talked about before, and it was advised that we don't do this necessarily for council minutes. But other meetings such as Historic Design Review Board, local planning agency, charter review committee, some of these, it would help, we want to just let a transcribing program just say what it is, we would still edit it, but this assists a lot in the, the time that is consumed trying to go through some of these meetings and try and scribe everything. And so this was really just to see how the council feels about that. Many municipalities are turning to things like this.
Yes, 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 yes.
Because it can give them a quick rundown, and then you go through and edit some of that stuff.
So why would it not be use of city council meeting?
Okay, so I have some mixed feelings about AI personally, but aside from that, here's, here's sort of the deal with this. Either way, we're gonna have to have eyes on these before they're finalized, and, you know, they come back here for meeting minute approval. But when it comes to the meeting minutes themselves, we don't, legally having a full transcription is not what's required. What's required is that we have a record of the items that were voted upon and how the votes turned out and what those items were under the sunshine law. So AI is kind of a, it is not as intelligent as it sounds. What it's doing at best is taking whatever recording we have, turning that into a pseudo transcript of that based off of what it can hear, and then trying to condense that down into what it thinks is most relevant, which means inevitably, we have to have eyes on this to make sure it's capturing everything. Now, do I think it's a bad thing to do for especially, let's call it, sort of more condensed meetings where we aren't like the planning commission and things like that where the issues are kind of, there's less discussion normally, and it's more contained to easily definable X, Y, and Z. There's not a whole lot of broader issues that may be addressed before the commission, the commission of here.
That makes sense.
So personally, I don't think it's a bad idea. It, I question the time-saving mostly for meetings like the city, like this one, where we're, you know, having a lot of back and forth about deciding how things are worded and things like that. Whereas with the, you know, LPA, we're just kind of saying yea or nay, or yes, this is approved with X, Y, and Z changes, or something like that. But aside from that, I don't see anything wrong with it, as long as we have eyes.
Mayor, I'll share, I, my business has used it for a year, and even court testimonies transcribed within five, five seconds. But you're gonna have to go back and look at word for word, and we do find mistakes.
Yeah, wipe it out.
For how much it helps and time-saving is amazing. But as I understand, as it relates to city meetings, you may not want every sentence word for word in, only what's required for you to put in, if I understand correctly. But as far as the AI, we've had their problems, and it's five to 10 seconds is done.
Like I said, I think it's helpful for more condensed type of things when it comes to people talking over each other and public comments, where we may not pick it all up, I think it's less utility. Yeah.
Okay, it looks like we may be well off using what we have to pen and, pen and paper.
So do we need to authorize or?
I don't, do we have a cost estimate for this or is this just exploratory?
This is, yeah, this is really exploratory, we don't have, there is one company that gives a free trial clerk minutes. They asked us to try out their program and we, we've tried that with some HDRB minutes, just to provide them some influence, see what we think about it, but.
That's about fifteen, twenty dollars a month for a business, and our city government has to pay that.
Uh, so.
This would sound like words off about.
Yeah, this is something that we discuss more than anything else. I mean, currently, if there's no cost to it, there's nothing really to vote on. It's the same as using a tool, which, you know, broadly speaking, Sarah has the ability to use a pen, she can use AI if she.
Give them that.
I think I wanted to know if anybody was inherently against it, just right off the bat, or if Mitchell saw any more problems with it.
I'm more with turn it right about the minute of the council, because it was screwed up. It does, you can fix that planning, but you don't want messing with the council.
Yes.
Because I put that stuff in there, you erase your whole junk, I got to put that on the thing. I didn't take that.
Okay, next item on the agenda, need for council member to serve on the Jefferson County Economic Development Council.
So I provided you what was, so Shannon Manning, the county manager, had reached out and asked me to bring this to this meeting. They're looking for a council member and I provided you what they received from Representatives Schoff, Tant, and Senator Corey Simon. There's a lot of discussion about whether Jefferson County is against developments, and so now they're putting together an actual committee.
Okay, I would like to serve on that with the council's permission.
Praise the Lord, I move. I don't want it, no, I did it my first time. Anybody else want to do it, you got it.
All righty, do we have any other takers? If not, I need a second.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, all righty, so you have a new Jefferson County Economic Development Council member.
Congratulations.
Here we go, here we go. Yes, sir.
If, also, before you move on to the next item, I was gonna add an addition to the agenda.
Okay.
If you're finished with that.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Felicity Appel from Kimley Horn, one of our consulting partners, has for you this change order number one is a separate sheet from the packet that I provided you. This is regarding the Montavilla subdivision septic to sewer program that we are currently working on.
Okay.
And Felicity is going to put it in place.
Good evening, the mayor, council, we receive you all again. So like Kirk said, you have before you a change order, I think all of you have seen the contractors out there working in the Montavilla neighborhood working on that septic to sewer. There were a few houses, you know, there's quite a few hills in that neighborhood to the west, and so some of the houses were not able to be connected by gravity, so they weren't in our first phase of this project. But what Kirk and I have discussed is putting in some forced main stubouts for future connections for a future phase of this project. And what we ask the contractor to do is to provide us with a change order for the cost of installing those forced veins on the other parts of the road where we're not doing gravity sewer, so that in the future, all houses in the neighborhood can be on centralized sewer. So those are the numbers that we provided. So I'm going to throw a bunch of numbers at you real quick and then I'll summarize it for you at the end. So you have a grant for this project from DEP. For construction, you have a little over 1.4 million dollars. Between your contract with us for construction phase services and your current contract with the contractor, it's about 1.3 million. So if you approve this change order, you will still have leftover in your grant funds, a little over thirty thousand, thirty thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. So what that means is that if you do approve this change order, it can still be a hundred percent grant covered with a little bit extra for any other unforeseen circumstances that we might come across.
So the connection would run parallel with the main road, not to the individual house?
No, these will run, these won't run to the houses. What there will be is there will be a forced main in the road, like in the center of the road essentially, with stubouts to the right of way line, so it will not be on anyone's property right now, unless they're in the phase one part of the project where we are connecting the homes to the gravity sewer. But Kurt has done a really good job. Everybody who's on that project is very much aware that they are on that project and we've been communicating with them on that, where the services are going, so.
So this is just to make future expansions a little easier down the road?
Yeah, because you have this money from DEP, you had, you know, a little over a hundred and forty thousand dollars still in your DEP grant for septic to sewer work in the Montavilla neighborhood. And we want to use as much of that grant funding as we can and not give it back if there's work to be done in the neighborhood.
So in the future, what about the need for lift station?
So there won't be lift stations. What there would be is grinder pumps, so are you familiar with a low pressure system? So instead of there being manholes in like big gravity sewer pipes, there's small forced mains, and each property would have its own grinder pump. But we are far away from doing that because the city does not have any ordinances on grinder pump.
That the individual property owner would have to purchase?
Not necessarily, it would depend on how you will structure your ordinances. Some municipalities put that onus on the homeowner, some municipalities take care of it themselves and they need an easement on each property owner's property if that's the route you're going to go. But for this project, we are not doing anything with the grinder pumps, we are not doing anything on people's property. This is just setting you up in the future, we get the ordinances in place, and we get more grant funding, and we can get more people on sewer.
Okay, how many do you speculate that this will be able to accommodate?
So with this addition, it would accommodate every home in Montavilla.
How many extra homes?
I think about between like, we're at our fifteen. We're getting about two thirds of the neighborhood right now with the gravity sewer. So this would be the other one third that wasn't included in phase one of the project.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Felicity, but this would not mandate any new attachments to the line at this point in time?
No, it would not.
And for any that are not, don't remember, when this went through, what we decided instead of putting a lift station in there is that all that could be fed by gravity would be hooked up. And those that are not is because their home can't be fed by gravity. So now we'll be putting those lines and so they're laying and waiting for when we do decide to either allow the others to hook up when they're ready to or they'd like to, or we're going to do something about it.
Way back when we started this project, I think maybe the second time Steve Wingate was here, it was the will of the city at that time not to have any lift stations, big lift stations in the Montavilla neighborhood. Because everything that was going on through Crook and Creek Lift Station at that time. So that's kind of how we ended up in this position now with not being able to serve the entire neighborhood with gravity, so.
And at a certain point, those homes that are still on septic, at some point in the future, if their septic fails, they may be required to tie into that sewer rather than replace the septic, is that correct?
Yes. So right now, the city has grant funds. If you have a gravity sewer line being placed in the street in front of your house, the city will connect you up using these grant funds.
So Florida statutes, there's actually something in there that if you have a running septic system that's working well, but these lines are provided, then you essentially have a year before you can be essentially forced to connect. If your system goes down, you get ninety days before you may be forced to connect because our urban service area actually goes beyond our actual city limits.
And that's the key, so I think we should stay within our boundaries, that is an urban service area, and we just kind of deal with the option that we putting stuff in now for potential growth. And then we just move forward because all the.
Yeah.
So if you'd like to enter.
I don't think that this is expanding the system at all, it's just using grant funds now that we have available as opposed to waiting and trying to get more grant funds in the future and, you know, giving money back to the EP that they've already said it's okay for us to use.
It makes sense.
Yeah, so the original project way back then was for the entire neighborhood. Then we asked DEP to reduce the scope so we could just feed it by gravity, which reduced the number of connections, which they were fine with, but now it's because the bids came in lower than we expected, which is great. We have this additional money to appreciate.
And those who have wanted to opt out, we have let them opt out, though we have explained the situation and that if they want it later, it may be at the cost of them, right now it is covered, so.
Okay.
I've made sure they're all aware.
So we want to entertain a motion? Make a motion that we accept the change order number one for the Montavilla septic tank, this sewer project.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, it's been properly moved in and accepted that we will accept the change in the order for Montavilla, and thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, was that you that seconded?
Yes.
Okay, planning items. One seventy-five South Jefferson Street, Stewart's Towing, request a transfer of city property.
I kind of wanted to explain this because this is going to be a persistent issue that we're sort of running into throughout the city with our land and the right of ways in certain areas. There is an exceptionally wide right of way along that portion of road. It's frankly much larger than it needs to be, but it is technically city-owned. And I don't mean to say that in a bad way, I just mean to say that the building for Stewart's Towing in particular has been there for.
Yes.
Time immemorial. I mean, Kurt, I don't remember when you said that building was built.
Most of that footprint was in the sixties.
Yeah, the fifties, everything, yeah.
Okay, so what Kurt and I have been discussing is how to sort of address this down the line, because we do have chunks of city property that are frankly not being used by the city. There's no utilities being run under them, and this is on a case by case basis as we address this, of course, because in some areas we do have utilities, in some areas we do have planned usage, and some areas we have sidewalks that we don't want to have owners or property owners privately maintain necessarily. But for this area, what Kurt and I would like permission to do is to negotiate sort of the sale of that right of way. It's already been occupied by building for a very long time. This just corrects everything and gets us to a point where we can, you know, we resolve this with A, not having to deal with any kind of quiet title type issues, and B, frankly, the city's not giving up a whole lot in this case. So we can, we would like permission to negotiate the sort of sale of this particular.
So when you say negotiate, you mean a price?
Yes.
Why couldn't we just?
Can I speak on this for a minute too, please? No, permission to speak. My name's Kim, I'm a surveyor. I survey the property, but go ahead.
Let you finish, please. Why would we charge them for it? Why wouldn't we just give it to them? I mean, it hadn't been, we had, that was the question, why wouldn't we just give it to them?
There's a few reasons, number one is it's still technically city property.
So sell it for a dollar?
I mean, if the council as a whole wants to vote to sell this as a property, or as for a dollar, that's something we can do. But down the line, keep in mind, we've seen it a few times in the past year here where there's an awful lot of properties throughout the city that the lines aren't necessarily the best. And I'd be a little cautious about functionally giving away some of this land and setting up more of precedence down the line for giving it away without some kind of exchange, especially if we need to use certain parcels for a purpose.
We had discussed one thousand.
The president's already said that we do sell it because we sold to the Clark Avery.
There was a little section, and we sold to the.
The tail shop.
On the right of way to the, it used to be old by itself, so I mean, that's the president.
There are circumstances where it makes sense to give the land away. I mean, we saw that last year when there was that giant trench in the middle of which, again, from research, was probably planning for an open sewer on a hand-drawn map from the early nineteen hundreds that we don't know exactly what happened to that since then. But in this particular case, there is, the use is more defined here. I mean, we have, the purpose of this right of way was originally for a road. The road is narrower and it has been narrower for decades than would take up the entirety of that right of way. The circumstances are different, and I think addressing these as being different might be the best way to handle this.
If you don't give it away and you offer it for sale and they come up with a bidding issue?
It's not necessarily in this particular circumstance because there, we are required to bid out when someone is selling us things. They are offering to purchase a piece of city property where we, or a city right here, and functionally, they're the only ones who can buy it because it's a right of way adjacent to their property that we are in turn abandoning. It's, it's not a situation where anyone else is going to have a use for that particular slot of land. And if we were all done.
Okay, I want to hear.
Hi, my name's Kim, I'm local land surveyors. And I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Stewart's property and the Trophy Creek right across it. As you all know, I mean, there's the right way, the wrong way, and there's just a county way. But I believe that this road, I mean, and I pulled all right of way records, I couldn't find other than using, you know, by way of a scale stick, just by eye that this road they intended for it to be larger. But I mean, for it, I mean, Joaquin Street isn't even, it's a fifty-foot right of way. And they are saying that, you know, Walnut is sixty feet, I mean, that is, that is just ridiculously wide. My suggestion would have been to vacate the north ten feet and the south ten feet because both of these properties have been there since forever half a century, have these enclosures forever half a century. And you can vacate both of those and it would revert to the original, so you wouldn't have to, excuse me, worry about it anymore and all that. You wouldn't have to sell it, you could vacate it because, I mean, right of ways are eastwards and it would revert to use adjacent homeowners.
To the current owner.
So, yeah.
I think we should look at the Trophy Creek as a separate issue with separate details.
Right, well, yes, you're right, it's directly across the street, but it's, it is going to be coming because during this, it's been brought a lot, but it's facing the same problem, so.
But like I said, the president's already been said, when the Clark Avery house wanted to be sold, there was a little strip. And we negotiated with the owner and the city, and they purchased it, so then you get a clear.
Well, you tell them how to fix for it, that's great, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, it is an easement, so we can, it's.
The property owner's on, you know, the easement until, you know, it's vacated by the county. I mean, all of it, yeah, all of it's on by the property, but the county has an easement at the right. Was all I was going to say.
No, that's perfectly valid.
So what is, what are your suggestions for?
What we would like to do in this particular case, and maybe we can expand this to moving forward with things like this, is we would sort of like permission because this sort of disposal of real property lies solely with the city council. We would like a delegation of that authority to Kurt for the purposes of negotiating the sale of this. If the council wants to give them the authority to execute the sales without council approval, that's something we can discuss as well. But what I would recommend at this time, since we're still kind of at the start of this process, is a negotiation, a permission to negotiate this with the property owners as issues arise related to. related to city easements such as, or such as this, to negotiate the release of those properties and to analyze it and make a recommendation to the council.
So on a case by case basis?
Yes.
Okay.
And how are we going to formulate a negotiated price? I mean, do we have a, it's just case by case, but I mean, so is there a general guideline or we?
I am not a property appraiser.
It's, it's not worth getting an appraisal on. You can get, appraisal's gonna be more than the property's worth, so that's not necessary. So, but a- as long as it's a nominal, you know, reasonable.
I don't, I don't see this, I don't see this being based off of the discussions Kurt and I have had. This is, it's not a pure token payment, but it's, it's enough that A, there's some consideration for a contract entered into on this. And B, it, it, there's some commiseration for the size of the, what's being abandoned in certain cases.
So within the council have, I guess, are we at the kind of this point where Kurt would negotiate and then would bring to the council for final approval, or are we moving through to execute a contract complete? Is that?
I would recommend that we sort of formulate something for council approval and then come to the council
Okay.
for that. I, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that in particular.
So that'd be another month or so before the sale could happen.
Yeah, and keep in mind, as we move through this, it may. Yes.
I, I'd like, I'd like to say something. Y'all all know I've been there forty-three years at station. And been a good life. Hey, been real good life. I'm ready to leave. And.
And we hate that.
Well.
But I understand.
Some people do. But anyhow, the thing is, I sort of got my business sold there. And over time, I, it was all concrete out where I put a little siding on my, on my shed and it went over the line a little bit. That's all it was. And, you know, if I'd have knew, hey, if I'd have knew at the time, that was a long time ago, it's, we didn't know, we didn't know you were gonna come up with, you know, back then, everybody was just, it was the road and you had the access and everything. And so the thing that I want, which over time, everything would work out, but I'm sort of in a hurry to leave there. I, I mean, and I don't, and I, I don't want to, I've been, I've been waiting, I've been at this about a year trying to sell my business out. And I'd really like to get it where I wouldn't have to wait another month. And I understand it's all there, but you know, if we could do something where I could maybe get the issue and if I have to pay, hey, if I have to pay, you know, for the thing, I mean, accordingly, you know, I don't mind paying that, but I'd sort of like to get it where if I could, I could go ahead with my sale and everything and the people that buy me out, they're gonna, they're gonna make a nice, they're gonna do a lot of improvements and make a nice story.
Okay.
And so I asked if you could to do as quick as we could. That's, that's what I'm asking about.
But then under the circumstances, I would amend and authorize, suggest we authorize the city attorney and the city manager to negotiate on behalf of the city with Stewart's to negotiate a price and execute a contract. So that.
Okay, uh, uh, do we, just off the top of my head here, cause I don't think I was here for the sale of those prior two easements. Does anyone recall what those were sold for?
I don't, it wasn't. It wasn't. I have to double check. I don't know. But it wasn't, it definitely wasn't a well bought. I'm honest. Maybe two is high. I think it was more than that.
Two thousand was high?
Yeah, because it was like the same thing on now script. And I have to check records, but I just know it wasn't a lot. It wasn't enough money to.
Okay, okay. As long as we're kind of on the same page on that this is a relatively low amount. I, I think we're on.
And it's the same thing, the same situation with the furniture, the furniture store with no packing shed.
Yes.
You just need, you just need, like you said, you need to clear tire.
Yeah.
Could you expedite that?
Yes, yes, no, you can. You can vacate it tonight.
My name is Chuck Stafford. I'm an attorney in Thomasville and I represent the buyer.
All right, now let's go.
And I, I just have one question, like clarifying question about your, what you suggested to the council. When you say sign a contractor, are you asking that the city manager have the authority to actually consummate the transaction? So we can close?
That would be my, that would be directionally whether, yeah.
That would be my understanding of it, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, for expedience and sake here.
And there, I'm about to clarify as a taxpayer. And I'm not an attorney and I haven't read the charter ordinances in a long time. But if the city, which is a government, has property, regardless if it's right of way or not, that needs to be put out for bid because I may want to bid on that right of way, cause I would have a monopoly then. I think this is the simplest thing to do. He's been an owner forty plus years and the new owners are coming in. The city has no purpose for that land. Vacate it tonight and let them move on with their business. This is what I would suggest as a taxpayer. Now, I'm not about the dollar, the city collecting a dollar, but you, we, we have to weigh it out.
But I think we have, we have the second, we just needed for the vote for you to go ahead through and.
Yeah, we have a motion.
And a second. It's gonna get done.
I don't have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all right.
Do, do you remember back the family house on Johnson? It, it, the house in Cochinon? I, I remember you come up here and I don't remember nothing about no finance going, but, I mean, I knew it's been a long time ago. I kept looking at you. Way back, they got double wired on that property now and said that house in Cochinon.
I live with, I live with Billy Goodehouse. That's called the Billy Goodehouse. It's the oldest house on that side of town. Yeah, so this all like same, similar. And I sold it, then back, then it's like, and it's burned down.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aight.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. Any objection? Okay, cap and oppose. One opposed, okay. Okay, all right, so the motion.
Uh, just a point of clarity here because I do recall that the, the requirements for bidding out the sale of real property was repealed in nineteen seventy-three for municipalities. We are not required to do that.
But you do it sometimes and you don't do it sometimes. That's the problem. But yeah, it's cool.
All right, shall we move forward to South Jefferson Street, Restore Glory Christian Center?
You have an application for you that has gone in front of the local planning agency. The application is to construct a five thousand square foot worship center. Um, that is located along South Jefferson Street. There was a unanimous vote to recommend approval. Um, one of the topics of discussion, just so you're aware, was the removal of all the trees and the clearing of the land. Couple of the trees are rather sensitive and as I expressed earlier, when you start removing trees, people kind of raise eyebrows. However, what we've looked at is what's proposed on the application for replanting of trees and shrubs. In the letter that I drafted along with the city manager, they are proposing a planting approximately one hundred new trees, approximately one hundred and fifteen shrubs to replace the trees that they are removing. Um, so we thought that there is something in our code called tree credits. That the removal of these trees and then what they're replanting kind of is a wash. So we don't feel that's any other issue with that. The local planning agency, some of the other concerns were about the secondary entrance on Jackson Street. But that is gonna be a secondary, more of an emergency entrance exit. Um, and Mr. Edward Bass is here representing the applicant, so if you have real specific questions or if he has anything to add.
Okay, the secondary is on Jackson and the primary is that?
Is on Highway nineteen.
Right there before you get to Dollar Tree?
No, depends on which way you're going.
Oh, yeah, if you're heading south, yes. If you're heading south, it would be on your left.
So the whole plans have changed, cause they told us the main parking lots in the rear and they need access to Jackson. I live over Jackson. And they told us the parking lots in the rear of the building, not nineteen. Cause they came around and met all the neighbors.
Parking lot's on the side.
It's on the side?
Side.
Yeah, the, the, the people with Restore Glory said they'll all be accessing Jefferson Street from that parking lot, not nineteen.
Uh, we're trying to discourage people from accessing Jackson Street because of the lack of improved infrastructure.
Leave me, we beg.
It's on the list for Scott.
Four times.
So it's a, it.
We'll hold, we'll hold y'all through it.
Okay, so that's, that's on a hill kind of sort of.
It is, so FDOT.
As, as you're pulling, you're kind of Burger King and you're pulling to Highway nineteen, you cannot turn left. There's a sign that says no left turn because of that.
We're gonna have the same, we're gonna have a right in, right out only condition as well, simply due to the site distance.
Yeah.
You know, folks coming over to the top of the hill. Can't, you, you know, if they're doing the speed limit, probably be okay, but we can't, we can't assume people are doing the speed limit, of course, so. Um, FDOT has dictated to us, we have all permits in hand from DOT already, that the driveway be constructed as a right in, right out only.
Two ninety.
Correct, Jefferson, that's correct.
So it would be similar to what we have in Burger King?
It'd be even more restrictive than what Burger King, because we're not only have a.
Yeah, cause you can still turn left.
We, we have a divider island even. We have a raised island that DOT may have put in.
Dollar Tree has that, but let me tell you, they were opposite because they were turned left into Dollar Tree and they're not supposed to. You know, coming over the, they're supposed to go down and turn on Cherokee and come up. Them roads were in and out, but not meant for the left tenders to come in. And they do it every time and almost every day we have an accident there almost. So that I'm adhering to the rules of the road and other than that.
Okay, rest me the day.
And Marshall, the one who put it.
Yes, okay.
At that point, they will.
All right, do we have any other questions on this?
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the application for Restore Glory Christian Center as submitted.
I'll second. All in favor? Okay, it's been properly moved in second that the application for Restore Glory Christian Center has been approved. Okay.
Thank you. I gotta go work.
You gotta stay this much.
Good to see you classmates.
Is y'all turning, sir? Is y'all turning to pass?
Yeah.
All right, let us move on, please. Uh, the next item is twelve forty-five South Jefferson Street, Aldi Store remodel.
Yes, ma'am. You have an application in front of you to remodel the, the former Windexie store into an Aldi. We've got some questions. I can answer most of them for you. It was a unanimous vote to recommend approval of the application by the local planning agency. Um, one of the items that they brought up that was of concern is the handicap parking and accessibility. Currently, there are six handicap spots where the old Windexie was. I believe the entire parking lot has fifteen, but just looking at in front of the old Windexie, there were three to the south, three to the north, but none of those parking spaces had curb cuts. So that was making anybody in a wheelchair handicapped having to go through the parking lot and into the entrance. Whereas ADA accessibility rules for the state, and I believe in our code, states they need to have direct access to the sidewalk. So that was one of the major concerns of the LPA. Um, I reached out to Aldi, told them their concerns, and they responded with a letter addressing that they will address that issue during the remodel.
Because my eyes aren't that good. So what is the square footage of the Aldi versus the old Windexie? Is there gonna be a footprint change?
It's gonna be approximately, I don't know the number. I could go and do the math upstairs. But everybody's familiar with the Windexie. You have the double door entrances. When you go in, off to the left, there was the manager's desk. Looking at the floor plans, it looks like that building is gonna be cut in half. Basically where that manager desk was. Therefore, you're gonna have basically one of the exit doors, the double doors, and then the other entrance door off to the right. So that gives you an idea. If you were to go down the old frozen food section, that's where it's gonna be cut in half. But I do not have those numbers off the top of my head, sir.
So what's gonna be in the other half?
There's no plan for, that is unused, unallocated space at this time.
And I don't know if that's gonna fall. I don't know if SGA Grocers or Design Group, if they lease the entire building or if they're just leasing that half. I believe that they leased the whole building and then I don't, I didn't read the contract to see who's responsible for leasing out the other unused portion.
But that would come through the local planning agency when things arise.
They already have a sign up.
Well, and, and we, and we went through the sign approval.
Yeah.
You're right, they put this up. I don't stop this up on the board.
Yeah.
I went up to the county and they said they pulled the permit maybe last week to put the signs up, which already went through LPA, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we did approve of.
Okay, are we ready to approve this remodel?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Aldi remodel as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aight.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we will approve the Aldi store remodel. Okay, next item is five eighty West Washington Street, Avera Clark House, requests to join the historic district.
Yes, ma'am. So you have an application there requesting to be recognized as a historic property at the local level. Uh, I believe we have a representative from the Avera Clark House here. Um, Mr. Tarmy, who's representing them, is not here, but this went through the historic design review board. They've got a unanimous vote to approve it at the local level. What that means is if the council decides to approve their application, that the only step after this would be to get letters of recommendation from you, Madam Mayor, and then also the chairperson of the county commissioners to give that letter of recommendation. Now, at the local level, city level, it's just us, but what they are actually requesting is to eventually be on the national level, which that requires a letter of approval from you, Madam Mayor, and I believe Commissioner Hosford at the moment.
I can't believe they're not already on there.
Um, again, I, I'm not, I don't know all this, this, the, the background information. I know that they almost got approved several years ago. But my understanding from speaking with Mr. Tarmy is that there were some things that were neglected that, that did not get them on the national register. So they have hired him as a consultant to make that happen, but for that to happen, they need to be recognized at the local level.
Yeah, it's the whole approval process. I've saw it.
And so this would.
At DMS for a few things. It's
Yeah.
a lot of places that should be, aren't because they never wanted to go through the whole approval process. A lot of places that are, are struggling to stay on there for the same reasons. It, it's a whole thing.
So this would put them in our district and it would not be contiguous to them. They would be sort of an enclave. But they would not be the only one. We have other properties that are in the district that are not contiguous with the main portion.
So then they could go nationally after the local. Okay. All righty. Okay, do we have, have a motion for the Avera Clark House? I move that we, that we request to join the historic district or that Avera Clark House requests to join the historic district.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve the Avera Clark House to join the historic district. Uh, next on the agenda, discussed need for addition to code of orders regarding change of use.
So, um, just really quickly, um, change of use is something that, uh, the building official and the building department and their codes require that permitting is done for. And so that is when something like, um, when the old Huckleberry Building, Huck- Huckleberries? That is now a church. That required a change of use to ensure, okay, this is where, does this fit the zoning? Are there any changes to the building for safety, for foot traffic, for anything that need to be done? Are they gonna have to move electrical stuff? Um, so this is sort of acknowledging that this is different than it originally intended, and do we have to make any changes? And so it's a good, uh, check along the way. Uh, now, we currently don't have a sentence in what the local planning agency reviews, um, to say change of use. Um, and just adding a few words into our code would clear up some confusion, because if somebody looks through, they would not know until they go see the building department, and then the building department says, this is a thing, you have to do this. They come back to us, we explain why it's important. Um, and so we would be looking at adding, um, adding some verbiage to the code, just to acknowledge that change of use is something that we need to look at, and we already enforce this because, um, our building official required it. Our building code.
So do we have, is there boilerplate language that other communities use that we can grab and, and use, that we don't have to reinvent the wheel?
Correct, yeah, and we can even pull from, from our building codes that James Kaufman did.
So is your proposal to have something, you know, for us to look at to amend the code?
Yes, I would bring it, we would bring it through the local planning agency, get their, uh, opinions on all that, and then we'd bring it back. This is just informing you that, that we're looking.
We need to go through the ordinance process for this, so that'll be, i- i- it's a slow roll, but it's good to have the discussion now.
Okay.
So we currently enforce this because we support our building department. Um, so this would just clarify some things, so there's less confusion.
Good.
When developers come forward.
And this is coordinated with the building department over there, so that everybody's on the same page.
Yes, yeah, and so right now, we know that he needs it, and he knows that we're aware of it, so we su- we support James Kaufman.
Okay.
Um, when he expects these things. And so the current ones that we've, that we had, uh, that, that church, that was Huckleberries, um, and then also Mr. Eric Paul, who's, they're moving Penny Lane Emporium into the house north of the, uh, Historical Association. Um, and we're looking at a couple others too. Um, Fred's is, the Fred's Building, they're going through this as well. Um, so these are things that we are enforcing. So we would just be.
Okay.
Clarifying some things.
Okay, uh, code enforcement, general discussion.
Yeah, I'm gonna tread lightly on this, cause I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, but, uh, being the code enforcement officer, I gotta kinda know the will of the council and what we really wanna kind of accomplish. Um, we already discussed the change of use. There have been a couple people that have done a change of use, or it's really change of occupancy that have not gotten the proper permitting.
Okay.
We wanna be business friendly, okay? I don't want that to, we're not trying to hold anybody up, we're not try, but there are boxes that need to be checked based on safety. Okay, we all have seen in the news where a porch will collapse and somebody's injured or, you know, or killed. Um, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily the concern, because that's kinda the extreme. But again, Mr. Kaufman's saying that we do need to make sure that the fire safety has been addressed, the electrical systems. When you're going from residential to commercial retail, or in some cases where people are converting barns into event areas. Okay, we've asked these people that we need engineered drawings. And as an example, it's crickets. Like, I don't, I don't know how to push this thing forward, or what the will of the council is, if we wanna push it forward. So we, my interpretation or my thought on this is we can go the code enforcement route. We can involve legal in this and go that route. Or Mr. Kaufman has also advised that we at least need to acknowledge that they have not done the proper permitting, and any liability may fall on them. Again, not being a lawyer, just in conversation, needing some kinda guidance on how do we kinda hold people's feet to the fire in circumstances like this where they're not doing the proper permitting?
So, code enforcement is still code enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Um, that's currently our mechanism to do all of this. And when we discover problems and we discover non-compliant uses, that's how we do this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it, it's, it, it's, I understand the angle of the change of use, and I think that's a great idea, because frankly, it's gonna pull more work off of you and put it up more on the front end, so that we have less of these issues moving forward, hopefully. And I think that's a great idea for this. But when, and sorry if I'm speaking out of turn here at the council, but from a legal perspective, what we have here is sort of addressing things after the fact.
Yes.
Which unfortunately is how the law works, nine times out of ten. But if, I like the change of use idea personally. Um, I think from a legal perspective, it's a good idea. And also it sort of highlights areas of concern, cause we can look at it and go, okay, you know, shop A is changing to, just by way of example, church, a church, or something like that. And that has different code requirements, that has different this, that has different that. And if they're not coming before, if they come before the council, we know what all of that is in advance, as opposed to us looking overhauled or going, oh, that's different. Wonder, wonder if that's all okay at this point, which is not the best.
And so there are a few that, that we are, like you said, we're requesting, um, some of these plans from the porch. They have a new event space. Um, we did it for the church, we're doing it for Fred's, uh, or sorry, for, for Bob and Jeff's moving into Fred's. Um, and then a couple that are related to this is some special exception uses that had not, have not been applied for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and which is the next one we're gonna talk about, nine ten North Jefferson Street, and also eight sixty-five.
Yes, sir.
Uh, North Jefferson, which is just across the street from there. Um, so some of this is just preparing the council that when we want to enforce these things, they'll take hearings and support. And so just for you to be aware going forward that.
Okay.
That's what some of this will take.
All right, so we're just doing general discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, so nine ten North Jefferson.
Now, Mr. Ronnie Isom has come to, um, speak to the council about this. I have, uh, we've spoken many times together. Uh, I've spoken with, uh, Mr. Sammy Patel, who is the actual property owner. Um, this is a property where Mr. Isom has been on for, um, uh, some time. It is B two. You can live in the building on B two, but it requires a special exception, uh, from the council. Um, I have informed him and Mr. Patel that we would need that from them to, to first authorize him to live in that building, because he also uses it as his business. There are also some, some of our code is vague in that there's not a lot of description of what a business should be. Um, and since, uh, since a proper application was not done for this business, we don't necessarily know what this business is supposed to be, uh, to even give it limits. And so, um, there's times where we've talked about, uh, anyone that's seen this property, it's like, okay, this, I see this is product. This, we're getting complaints that this is maybe garbage, or this is a nuisance, and this is clutter. Um, but then we're informed that, oh, well, this is, I'm parting this out, and I'm gonna sell this, and I'm gonna get rid of this, and it's like, okay, well, where's the limit? You know, and is this zoned to be a junkyard? Or, you know, so there's, we are working on this property, but I've heard a lot about it, and so we're just trying to bring the council in on this discussion, and Mr. Ronnie Isom would like to address the council about, um, about this property. Well, about the property that he rents from Mr. Sammy Patel, who could not be here today.
He's in, he's in Indiana cause his father passed, praying for him and his family. My name is Ronnie Isom. This is the first time I've addressed this council or come to this meeting. I was born on eighth of April nineteen sixty-two, graduated from Jefferson County, class of eighty. At eighteen, I joined the army. I served my country for thirty-five years. Twenty years and four months as a soldier, and another fourteen as a civilian. And one day, I walked into my office, and I sit down and my stomach was boiling like eggs do. And, and cause I took syrup, cause I can't throw that. And so they sent me to the hospital to try to figure out what was going on. They couldn't figure it out, so they sent me home. That morning, I got up to get up to go pee, and I peed on myself. That's very embarrassing. And I'm so egotistical, I got up and went to the bathroom anyway. Then I fell through the wall and had a stroke. Leg paralyzed for three days. To tell you the truth, I was talking to my God. I said, God, I've been helping all these people, and you ain't giving me nothing. He said, I ain't, did I ask you to do that? I said, no, you ain't asked me to do what I did on my own. You better stop doing stuff on your own, do what I tell you to do. And so I decided I'm coming home. Mont cell is my home. So I decided to come home and I started at two ten, up there where Dominique is. Got the place in October seventeen, and I didn't come in February third, two thousand eighteen. But I got the place in October. I was the first one up there to rent the building and stayed in Fayetteville for three months, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Came here and was doing good. Then COVID came. And once COVID came, everything got messed up again. And so I moved down to nine ten North Jefferson Street in June two thousand nineteen. I moved down there and, and I was trying to, to, to get an outreach program to help the community, cause I would even help with one another. And so I was doing that, and then on May first, the governor said, we're closed. And that's when COVID really hit. And when he closed up, I told my workers, you got to go, because we're closed down, and there's nothing happening. At that point, I was on the inside, working. And so I went on and plowed for twenty, twenty-one, and, and I was trying to go to school. I graduated from Fayetteville State, Fayetteville Tech Community College with a, a social and art degree. And I wanted to come back to Florida State to be a therapist. So I get back here and they say, you know what, you gotta get a, you gotta, you gotta have a, a language. I said, language? I didn't get that when I went to Jefferson. So I said, you know what, I'm going to Calaski Community College to learn Spanish. The first Spanish was easy, but then I had to write it in the second one. Again, my stroke, went to messing with my brain. I went to the doctor and gave them, they did a test on me, they said, you know what? If you got to do a thing for an hour, you need an extra thirty minutes to get it done. That means my brain was a little slow at getting stuff done, but I ain't gonna stop, I never quit. So I get around, and, and so I went to Barbara Sarsen, a lawyer. She's up down at Jefferson Street somewhere up there, around that market, around there. And she started me with Quick Shop Market LLC, because Florida don't accept EIN number so proprietary. So I got my Quick Shop Market LLC for nine ten North Jefferson Street. So I got that and I, 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 I started. And then one day I went to Tallahassee, and I walked from the bus station down to the mall. To the mall, and I, I walk slow, cause I have side nerve damage, but I walk. Every step I take, I say, help me, Jesus. I walked down there to get my EIN number, my, to get, so I, like, my taxes to do right now, just do my taxes. And I got that. And then Grandpa, do y'all know Grandpa? Grandpa was two men up there, two men?
Oh, yeah.
Grandpa, I'm the white Grandpa. I spent about four thousand dollars with him buying stuff from him when he went out of business. He went out of business and him and I, just like that. And so I got the stuff down there, and I called his person that had him with the credit card machine. And then I told him I do my business outside. She said, set it up. And let, see if we gonna approve it. So I set it up, and they approved it for me to do it outside. Because I believe you gotta go through order. If you ain't got no order, then you ain't, you can't do what you're supposed to do. So they set it up, and like he said, we've been going back and forth. And I ain't gonna say I've been doing everything right, cause I'd be alive, but I don't like to lie. I'll just say I do little things, I did some things, but after a while, my brain kicking and say, you can't do this no more. I'm a little slow now, but I'm sure though. And so I, 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 I've been living there since two thousand nineteen, I never had a problem. Never had a problem, and I don't, I don't care what Sam Patel say, I just know what I've done. And the thing about it is, I just went to the hospital, and I'm gonna be sitting down here in a minute. November third, I went to the hospital, cause this, this back was killing me. And they gave me a Toretto shot, and Friday, I'm going to Tyra fight, so you can work on my back. I go to Dr. Ortiz at Tallahassee Memorial since two thousand eighteen for my back. It hurts even now, but that don't stop me from doing what I gotta do. I just wanna help Mont cell Florida. This is my home, and I wanna help these people, because a lot of them are hurting. And when people are hurting, I believe in helping one of another. Now, I don't, I don't, I don't break rules, if you tell me what the rules are, I'll abide by them. But I have to understand what the rules are, and sometimes my brain's a little slow. So I just want you to know I'm here, and, and I stay in the building, been there seven years, in that, in that place. That place, I, I can't drive, cause I take twenty-three medicines. If I take them prescribed medicine, that means I'm prescribed high. And tonight I walked up here, cause I lost my scooter key, and I can't drive a scooter. So I walked up here, I, whatever I have to do, I'm gonna complete the mission. I'm gonna get here, cause in the army, you never quit until the mission is complete. And so I will be putting a formal request in, as he says, an exception to policies. I put it in, but I'm broke, I'm a wounded warrior, but I'm a soldier. And I've been there, nobody said anything, for seven, seven years. This is my seventh year here, and all I seem to be running into is problems, 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 problems. And all I wanna do is help.
Yes, sir.
And when I wanna help, I'm gonna help one way or the other, it doesn't matter. So I just want you to know, thirty-five years in army, got side nerve damage, I might fall now.
Don't you do that.
I'm just saying I might. Cause I, I, I got, when I lean to the side, I fall all the time. This, this is side of a nerve damage.
Okay.
Throbbing pains through my leg. That's why I can't be moving all over the place. That's why I got a cane. That's why I got a scooter, because I can't be driving and I can't be moving. So I'm stable where I can do two things, live and work in the same place, and make a difference in this world. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your military service.
Yes, sir.
So basically, you just saying that Mr. Patel need to put in the special request application?
Yeah, so I would like a special exception use.
Right.
To live in the building.
Right.
Uh, as you can, you can see in this picture, there's a newly erected sign, although there's no words on it yet. You would need a sign permit for that, cause that just came up recently. And then I would like to get a development permit, or, or some sort of permit, so that we can at least acknowledge what this business is, or what the parameters are for that business.
Right. So, but that will be on the application?
That would be separate from the special exception use, so this would be a.
Well, when you put in the special, you go, you go, aren't you gonna state what kind of business you're gonna be running after?
Well, the special exception is just to live in a B two zone.
Yeah, the special exception is for residents.
Right, like we did, like we did for the one, a red across on the post office.
Correct, yeah.
For the lawyer, we did one.
Yeah, i- i- it's a resident, so that, that request is exclusively for using a B two as a residence. The, when it comes to the signage and the business itself, that's a little. The, when it comes to the signage and the business itself, that's a little, that's a separate application ordinarily.
Right, and I, and I guess I was gonna say, since we thought for discussion, doing that part along with all of these, addressing all of these other stuff, need to be done with a workshop to give him a clear picture of how he going, because I thought we already had a code enforcement process that we was going through when somebody reported to City Hall, you go out and investigate.
Yeah, so this, this is. To be completely honest, in my opinion, this is a little preliminary with the applications coming through at this point. Because some of this is going through the LPA and we already know that process. This is more of a, I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but this is more of a keeping everyone informed as to what's going on regarding certain actions that have come before here before. In this particular case, it sounds like he's well on his way towards getting this cleaned up now. What I would potentially mention is Kurt, I know there's certain ordinances regarding outdoor storage and things like that. If perhaps you and, you sir could have a brief conversation about that and the requirements in Monticello for outdoor good storage and things like that. That may be helpful in cleaning up some of this as a mess moving forward. But it, from the sounds of it to me, there's nothing before the council today.
Right, no, I just wanted to introduce myself.
Yeah, is that, is that correct? Am I just?
Yeah, I'm also, like, with Jefferson County, their code enforcement, they are complaint-based only code enforcement. If we were to be proactive, which is what we sort of are at the moment, I mean, we can go around all day long and create more work than we have manpower to deal with. So it's really looking for guidance on what, what things the council wants to really be, you know, kind of a higher priority, first of all, but also do we wanna be complaint-based or do we wanna be proactive?
Well, I, I think, and again, this is remembering from conversations when I was first starting years ago, a year and a half, years and a bit ago. I think what we're more looking for is we're trying to be proactive in a compliance-oriented way. So we're giving folks the opportunity to come into compliance, to file all of this stuff before we're, you know, knocking over a dilapidated building or something like that and sending them to bill for it. If, if I'm incorrect in any of those assumptions, by all means, let me know. I mean, I.
No, I was in the process. That's what I'm saying. And I'm just saying, we have to be there because otherwise we back into charity.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay.
We, yeah.
So clearly, if we have a complaint, we have to act on that. So that's, I mean, that's just right out of the bat. So then the real question for me is the secondary part of the proactive part of what, how, how much, you know, are we expecting leeway, et cetera, is guidance on the proactive part of things or?
Well, this should all be documented. You simply go and research that process of how we handle it. Because all of that's documented where there's two or three different times you come before the council and then you act on it. There's a process already.
I'm, 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 I guess I'm more thinking of like, they, they drive by and see something that hasn't been formally complained. No formal complaint has been written, but it's, there's an obvious change or work taking place to, you know, the, I think what he's, correct me if I'm wrong, but you'd want guidance. Are you, are you encouraged to whip in and say, hey, what's going on here? Or do you drive by and wait until somebody files a complaint?
That's really the biggest concern. I mean, right now, as an example, I mean, being on the Historic Design Review Board is basically administrator in the local planning agency. I've had time to get to know some of the, the people in the community and on these boards and some of the concerns that they have. They keep asking, you know, what's being done about this? How do we do it? One situation in particular is some of the parking issues that we've had, you know, we've never enforced parking. So, I, I mean, is that, it is code enforcement, but what is the procedure? I mean, if I send a certified letter, the car's not moved. Do we come up with some kind of a citation-based or written warning? We had a situation today, Mr. Eisen was, had an open burn. I got a call from the police department, you need to do something about this. Like, it's in our code. We don't have open burning, but I, I just asked him to kindly put the fire out and he complied. So, I mean, those are simple things, but I mean, is there a process or procedure that we need to, to really look at, whether it's citation-based? We're supposed to have a code enforcement board, which we don't have, which right now it kind of falls on.
We have a nuisance abatement, we're supposed to have a nuisance abatement board, I believe.
Right, so just trying to find out what we wanna do going forward, you know. I don't mind sticking my neck out and doing the work, but I just, I don't know how far to take things and how far to push stuff.
And I guess that's what I'm referring you back to review the process. And then we come back with, because that process, like you said, the council is the enforcement board, because you keep coming back. But I think you need to review the entire process. But what was getting sticky was when you was discussing what you consider a junk foul versus what somebody else might consider.
Correct.
Supplies.
And then it's.
And then that's what I'm saying, that we probably need to do a workshop and kind of come up with. Because we saying it's junk foul now in front of the city cemetery. It's a, a ghost lot. Because you got a dilapidated house, you got all of the butchers just hanging out there, so.
And, and some of that is just, um, the, the dilapidated houses is one thing. And we've been, that's been something that's been having some work done over, on it over the past few years. When it comes to outdoor storage and things like that, it, it, that's more of an issue that we need to sort of look more into it. We're heading more in that direction. I mean, for a while here, the dilapidated houses was a larger issue that would, direction was given to our former city managers that, you know, we wanna focus on getting rid of these dilapidated houses because there's various dangers that are associated with them. I, I think what we're looking at here with, you know, our, our new folks is whether or not we wanna focus on something else, we wanna move forward with how things have been going. We want to refocus this. We wanna look at more policy changes. It's a directional concern that he's coming to us with. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is this, you suggested a workshop, is this?
Right, because it gonna have to present.
Yeah.
Evidence and examples of, of what you're running into on the day-to-day.
I think I would agree with the workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, and just so that Quinn here has a little bit of direction. Are there any special areas of concern that the council has right now today regarding code issues or things like that? I mean, we know that dilapidated buildings, we know those exist, we know that it, it, we know the process for that. That's a slow process that we have to work through. We have to send letters. We have to do all of this stuff. Because those are not gonna get cleaned up on their own, nine times out of ten, the property.
And we have that too. Yeah, and I've been able to push some of those through. We have a process for that. We work with the building official. This with Mr. Ronnie Eisen, this is one that nothing, nothing had been done for a few years. And so digging back in to say, hey, let's kind of start some of this from scratch, which is business. We just need the support for that. It's, it's more.
All right, so now, Monticello does have more than Mr. Eisen.
But, and that's, Mr. Eisen was the one that agreed to, actually, he wanted to come and address the board, there are the council. There are several that we are dealing with. And, and one of them, they already did, we did a special exception use for Mr. Eric Paul. He was, when I first started looking at this, I looked at who else fit that mold. And so Mr. Eric Paul submitted for special exception use for one on the opposite side of the courthouse, so.
Okay, all right.
So Mr. David Price Allen, Mr. Ronnie Eisen are two that I am working on now.
Mr. Eisen. Well, they out of business now within Tallahassee, the old flea market. And I don't know if you ever had any stalls over there, um, bins, but just the way it was lit, people call it jumps. Well, when you go there, they just have dividers and when they close, they have either lock on it or they cover it up. Okay, I mean, just, I have bought a ten by twenty tent. And a ten by thirty tent that I go ten by twenty. And Matthew Johnson has come and cleaned all my stuff up so I can put it back in the bag and put my bicycles in there neatly. And then I, what he said, I think my understanding was, and I asked him to check it out for me. I said, what if the tent is open? You got another establishment. Because he was saying, if I got one closed and I close another one, that's two establishments. And I would prefer to lock it up, but I don't wanna get cold. No, you, a tent, I mean. I said tents, there's a ten by twenty and a ten by thirty. Because it covered out of sight, it's out of sight. It's out of sight, right. That flea market is open, when it was there, it was open on Saturdays and Sundays. And when those people leave that business, they cover it up. Yeah. And they come back the next week and then they open it up. But it's just like your stuff look right there. As long as I know. Somebody look at it, look like junk, but it really ain't junk. Like he said, but junk, somebody can be a dinosaur.
Sir, that's why I want our city manager to talk to you, because we do have an ordinance on outdoor storage.
Okay.
And I want him to have a chat with you to make sure that, you know, y'all are in compliance, you understand what, if anything else needs to be.
See, I'm like this here, you can come in and tell me that burger is, is just, I, I like the city code. That if I see the code, I see it in writing, you know, I don't think he's saying or you saying, it's like, it's showing me state of Tennessee. And if I see the code in writing, I ain't got no choice. And I will abide.
Yeah. We're working on compliance with you, sir. We're not.
Oh, I ain't, I ain't fighting nobody. I don't fight, I'm not a fighter, I'm a lover. I love God, I don't get it wrong.
I got you.
Okay, let's, let's move on.
And I do have you alls over there now, Grant, you alls.
Okay, all right, so you got your thing going on, your business there, dilapidated buildings and homes.
We, uh, I, I think we've, the other three are related to this whole discussion. And I think, I think that we've gotten enough guidance on this.
All right, what about that?
Let me bring a point to this council, and I've complained and complained, my neighbors have complained on Osceola Lane. The house, I understand mental illness, we work with it. That house is over vegetated and that's on the agenda. The house, we can't sell our homes. There's four of us on the cul-de-sac. We can, y'all know the house I'm talking about. Nothing's been done. Well, he went out the other day because of overgrown vegetation, started burning. My neighbor came out and said, he's gonna catch his house on fire. I was foolish and said, I doubt it. Thirty minutes later, his house was on fire. So now that put our homes in jeopardy. The city has an ordinance. We can't do anything twenty-five feet which comes through our front door. We have a twenty-five foot setback. We have a twenty-foot setback and ten foot on each side. I've asked the city to come in and take care of that house. If he ain't willing to do it, take care of it and build him like they have done other people. I don't understand why, I mean, we complained, and we've complained about this for four years. And the house has got weed eaters on the roof, it's actually got lawnmower on the roof on the back. It's got tarps on it, rats, roaches in the summertime run. The city's twenty-five foot, you can't even see his house. And it's the only house out of the four houses, and I can't even sell my home right now. So I'm asking the city to give code enforcement. If we're gonna use the title code enforcement, he needs to enforce the code. And that's all I have to say about that. I mean, we need, we need help. We need help on Osceola Lane.
Where is this house?
Right down.
So, Mr. Von Queckner, um, is, and we speak a lot with his brother and his sister, um.
Well, you took her name off the house now because she's scared we're gonna take action.
The owner gets very confrontational with us when we go to the property. We've gone with police before. Now, all the plants, um, there's been arguments from their side that these are specific plants and this is not just whatever. This is, I like this plant, I like this plant. And then it's, when you're talking about like, okay, wait, how tall is too tall for this plant?
It looks worse than your store.
Then there's also, the road that they are on is private. So there's a little different standard of like, how close he can place something to that street that we do not own. We, we got him to remove the barbed wire, which I had a problem with because he had barbed wire in his yard.
That's the first time.
And then, what's that?
That's not the first time.
And then, um, but there are some things like tarps on the roof.
It look like the rest of the apartment I paid by the, that trim.
He also likes to send us random emails that make no sense whatsoever to our work emails all the time.
Mental illness, we understand, but now he's caught a house on fire because of overgrown vegetation, because of the junk. And we're even here looking at a business, and yet we have this home destroying all of our homes. And we have relatives even on our board that understands that can impact our livelihood because we can't sell our homes because of that home. And I know the city has ordinances for this, code enforcement. We need to enforce the code.
Yeah, and so we have sent letters and so that would be one of the properties that when we get ready and we get a bundle of them to do a hearing about nuisances, he would be included in that.
Okay, when, when can we do that about nuisance? We'll sign up now because we've been combating this for two or three years. Can we enforce the code?
And the city manager.
Okay, but thank you, Mayor. I'm setting up.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all righty. So are we working on a workshop date?
I guess we do it at the end, but I don't know if they're gonna be ready for it this month, whenever they have the information. But I think that, at number eleven, soon we'll decide.
Okay, um, we could, we could get enough stuff together for a, the last week of the month to have a workshop.
Last week of the month.
And when it comes to the workshop, what are we?
Workshop is mostly discussion, normally.
Um, I assume.
I assume, council is not necessarily, because we don't make any decisions, so we just really.
Yeah, I, I, I thought it was more, it, it's more geared towards potential changes in code or enforcement directions. What do we?
A workshop can be any topic that takes more than six minutes discussing this.
Yeah, I think, I think some, some verbiage changes and I think some clarification on like possibly standards uh, for, for what is this, or has it gone too far when it comes to a business? Uh, because we are lacking some of that.
All right, let's hold back to, to the last of the meeting then.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question.
Yes, sir.
In the past, a workshop was anything that take over six minutes to discuss in this meeting needed to be workshop because everybody had all kind of questions.
That, you're correct, uh, Councilman Evans, I totally agree. That's what it is. Can't fix it in five weeks, move it on to a workshop.
All right. Our opposed to council, Chief Mosley?
Everything's in my executive report.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Uh, I, I have nothing further to say to this.
Okay, city attorney?
Uh, yes, I wanted to briefly bring up Kurt's performance review. Um, I handed out a memo earlier today to all of you. On a whole, the average review was a four point four five out of five with individual scores ranging from four point one five in citizen relations all the way up to four point eight eight with fiscal management. And the, the main pros are, the more, most positive comments seem to be regarding employee relations and fostering a good working environment. With the cons being, you know, we're still kind of in the learning phase. We've only been a few months into Kurt's position as a city manager. As you recall, there was a provision in the contract for this review. At this point, the council would like to discuss this. That kind of ends my part.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, we applaud, uh, Mr. McKeewitt.
Yay!
It's an extremely Polish name.
All right, wonderful performance. We, we really appreciate you and we do see all your hard work.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments for, uh, city manager? Okay, a city clerk is next.
We have a utility clerk filing. Um, we have a utility clerk filing.
Okay.
Started as of last Tuesday, and so far, being exactly a week, we are soaring, we are doing great.
Great, great.
Hopefully, we, um, we, we have a, a winner out of this one for a good while, um, and I just try to stay afloat. We're doing good.
And what's her name?
Davanna.
Davanna Arnold.
She, she's working.
I think it's county.
She came from the tax collector's office.
Okay.
I worked with her years ago, um, we, well, we, we both worked multiple jobs, a little while time ago.
Okay.
So, she's great, bright, um, young.
She's a winner.
Brings the night's best to the city hall.
I think it was a, a good fit, so.
Great with the customers.
Hopefully, we don't scare away.
Wonderful, wonderful, city member, council member reports, uh, the wonderful Brian Mockland.
Um, I, only thing I have is, um, Halloween was Friday night, and that's a crazy night to have kids out on the road. I just wanted to say, your officer's presence was noted, um, on Washington Street, uh, and much appreciated, their presence helped keep everybody calm, I didn't see anybody doing stupid stuff out there, and, um, appreciate everything you did to make that a successful evening, so, that's all I have.
So, I've seen Chief in my own eyes, I promise, he did great. I made him stop in the middle of traffic to eat away.
Okay, all right, well, always quiet on my end. Thank you, chief, no gunshots, no nothing, okay. All right, I, I would like to request, uh, from the council to be able to attend the December Florida Legal Citizens Meeting. I didn't think I was gonna be able to go, but I am, uh, on one of the legislative committee, the federal Action Strike Team.
That's separate, that got nothing to do with what we have, that's a separate committee. But it's not, it's not a committee, it's, it's, it's a delegation that go to Washington, New York City once a year. And what they doing, probably just gonna meet the end, end of the year, for that, getting ready for the new year.
Okay.
So, if you wanna go, I mean, that's, that, that-
Oh, we're going to meet in Orlando, we're talking about going to the strike.
Well, the strike is, they're probably gonna have it in, I, I mean, I haven't seen any information come out, but if they have it, we got these five committees gonna round up December, which have it ready for the, um, legislatives, that starts in January. So, we compiling now, the fourth, and take all that paperwork and shit back to Tallahassee, so, when the legislatives and inspections, we get the same information they have, it's the same thing the state of Florida pushing against whatever they wanna do with the, uh-
So, the meetings in Orlando.
Yeah, me go get on that.
Yes, yes, that's where I'm going, don't worry about the part, I'm, I'm, all right, just let me get there.
So, uh, Gloria and John are both registered and both have accommodations already for the conference.
Okay, Mr. Evans.
I'll see you there, I'll see you there.
Um, just wanted to remind Chief and Manager that we got a call from Second Harvest, and in spite of all of this stuff that's going on in the country, we will have a, um, food giveaway this Friday, same location, at, um, eight thirty. Um, we also got a call from one of the food banks, that they also want us to distribute some, some that they had left over. So, we expecting a large crowd, depending on what's going on, and so, we clearly appreciate it, and so, yeah.
Got you.
Okay.
Um, that's it.
Oh, and Councilman Jones?
Chief, you, you might be able to help me out. We have, I saw there was the, the, uh, nuisance animals was running the street. Um, what happened was, I called Animal Control, and I think I sent them on a goose egg, but I learned from resident that they have a fence between theirs, and they get through the fence and come in the yard, and, and they're afraid to go outside, because they're bulldogs. So, you, you might need to go to that house, used to be your house, go there and talk to those people, they need to have those animals, because they, they're nuisance, they're bulldogs. And if a person in their own yard can't go in there, afraid to go out, they need to put in check. And that's, I, I walk my dog all the time, that's how I know all the time, but the same dog was loose, and it came down the road where I was walking my pets. Well, I didn't have a problem with it, because you, you got a report, but, uh, just, just, just if you, because I, I don't think they listen to anybody. You have residents over there senior, they, they up in their eighties and seven, and so, when they can't go outside, they get agitated. So, you just go by that, contact those people and let them know they need to fix that fence, matter of fact, they wanna fix their jump fence. That's just matters about, uh-
Okay, all righty, we're here from, uh, Councilwoman Katrina Richardson.
Thank you, I have nothing, however, I do wanna apologize for being late and let you know just briefly why. I had a traveler who was headed to Italy today, and she was at the airport getting, given the passport, they would not accept her passport. It had been frayed down at the bottom, and there's a little chip in your passport, none of us ever knew that. There's a little chip down there that they said was damaged, she couldn't go. She, mm, called me, and I had to go to the airport, pick her up, take her to Madison, then come here, so, I apologize, I feel bad for her.
Oh, my goodness.
Check your passports.
I have one last thing, uh, Mr. James had brought up at the previous meeting about that bus stop on Second and Tongue. Um, so, right now, we are getting clarification on exactly where the property line is for our right-of-way and, uh, Mr. Curtis Hayes' property, so that we know what we have to work with. Um, and then, uh, we just got, we pulled out some new signs, some fresh signs to mark that there is a bus stop there. So, uh, Rico Watkins is gonna be getting those up, uh, this week, and then, um, and it will, I haven't heard back. I reached out to the school board, uh, or to the school's department that deals with that stuff. No one's gotten back to me about working together on this, so, uh, I'm gonna reach out to Jackie if I get a chance, and then, uh, and then we'll, I'll be able to present, uh, a, a scope of work of what, what we might be able to do for them, that's where the bus stop.
Right, right.
And just to update. Um, I've been parking over there in the mornings, um, making, observing the traffic and all, and, um, so, we're, we're working.
Thank you for pulling up on that.
Good, good.
I've seen, uh, the council and-
Oh, I've been walking all the time, I take them back, I see them.
Well, we appreciate the diligent work, uh, from our police department, from our, uh, city manager, uh, because, you know, they, they're out there doing it. And all of these city, city workers, you see them out there, and, uh, seem like they're happily working. So, haven't heard any complaints, everybody seems to be getting on well, and, and loving Mr. Kurt.
They were in water up to their head today fixing a leak on Pearl, so.
Boy, they can love you.
I brought them coffee. More love.
Whoa, did you get it fixed?
Yes, yes, yeah, so, we, we have some stuff to clean up, but we got that fixed, and we're gonna be clearing those, uh, there's been storm drainage problems in that portion of Pearl for quite a while. We're gonna be getting those all backed out in the next few weeks, um, and there should be no more storm drain problems.
Great, 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 okay, so if all hearts and minds are clear, this meeting stands adjourned.